Okay. I'm going to call this meeting to order while everybody stand for pledge allegiance. The pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance. To the republic.
The reading and approval of the minutes from the board of commissioners meeting dated June 2, 2021. Do I have a motion to approve those minutes?
Motion.
Second.
On the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Opportunity for the public to address the board on agenda items online.
No, we received no emails today.
Okay, we're going to start in on resolutions. Twenty-one dash zero one six two approving current payables, Brian.
Be it resolved, the board of commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby approve the following payables. Lackawanna County General Fund numbers three, two, three, two, six, three, dash, three, two, four, two, eight, nine, inclusive totaling four million, one hundred and five thousand, six hundred and ninety dollars and thirty-three cents. Electric fund, electronic fund transfers, including all payroll accounts totaling six million, four hundred and thirty-seven thousand, three hundred and ninety-nine dollars and sixty-eight cents. Adopted at a regular meeting, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on June 16, 2021. Madam Chairwoman.
Okay, do I have a motion to approve twenty-one dash zero one six two?
Motion. Second.
On the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Resolution twenty-one dash zero one five six entering into a cooperation agreement with Lackawanna College, Brian.
Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby authorized to enter into cooperation agreement with Lackawanna College, five oh one Vine Street, Scranton, Pennsylvania, one eight five zero nine for the development and delivery of the important topics in today's criminal justice world, professional organizational and community awareness program. Be it further resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County does hereby direct the Director of Planning and Economic Development to sign and authorize all documents related to this program. Adopted at a regular meeting, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on June 16, 2021. Madam Chairwoman here to speak upon that is our Director of Economic Development, Ms. Brenda Sacco.
Hi Brenda.
Hi, good morning, everyone.
Morning, morning.
This resolution is approving a cooperation agreement with Lackawanna College for the development and delivery of a de-escalation program at the request of Lackawanna County focusing on current topics facing criminal justice professionals on all levels. The course will cover six areas, behavioral health and substance abuse, de-escalation, individuals with special needs and mental health, human perceptions, and how they affect behavior and communication, bias profiling and procedural justice, and sensitivity, diversity, and inclusion. Participants will receive a law enforcement continuing education C L E E certification from the Lackawanna College Police Academy. This program was reviewed and approved by the Pennsylvania Municipal Police Training Commission. This past April, course attendees will also be awarded four point five C L E E credit hours to fulfill the mandatory annual training requirement of Pennsylvania municipal police officers. Does anyone have any questions?
And the reason Brenda, we decided to do this is, can you explain to the, anyone who's listening?
There is most certainly, as, as we can see from the, the George Floyd incident, that there is a need for training. And we looked to our partners at Lackawanna College to help us create a program, which is the, the results, and we also had it approved through the Pennsylvania Municipal Police Training Commission. So this is really one of its, one of a kind, and we feel that it will most certainly help our our criminal justice professionals on all levels.
And it's more of a proactive type of training so that, I mean, we, we have some of the best police officers, I believe, you know, in our county, and we just want to make sure that everybody's prepared for anything moving our way. So I think, I think it's a, a great program, and I'm excited to see it finally come to fruition.
I agree.
Anybody have any questions for Brenda? Do I have a motion to approve twenty-one dash zero one five six?
Motion.
Second.
On the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Brenda, you're sticking around. Resolution twenty-one dash zero one six three, Brian.
Entering into a cooperation agreement with Dixon City, be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of the County of Lackawanna is hereby authorized to enter into a cooperation agreement with the Borough of Dixon City for the Dixon City Borough Veterans Drive Improvement Project. Be it further resolved, the Board of Commissioners of the County of Lackawanna is hereby award the following community development block grant construction contract for the Borough of Dixon City, for the Dixon City Borough Veterans Drive Improvement Project. Number one, general construction to Stefurski Paving Company, Three Export Lane, Archbowl, PA, the lowest and most responsible and qualified bidder for thirty-two thousand, nine hundred and thirty dollars and seventy-five cents. Adopted at a regular meeting, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on June 16, 2021. Madam Commissioner here is once again Director Sacco.
These are standard required agreements for the Community Development Block Grant Program. The resolution states that the county is entering into the cooperation agreement with the Dixon City Borough and a contractor agreement with Stefurski Paving, the lowest, most responsible bidder for the Dixon City Borough Veterans Drive Improvement Project for amount of thirty-two thousand, nine thirty, seventy-five. Does anyone have any questions?
Okay, do I have a motion to approve twenty-one dash zero one six three?
Motion. Second.
On the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Resolution twenty-one dash zero one six four, adopting Lackawanna-Luzerne County Joint Comprehensive Plan, Brian.
Whereas section three oh one of the Pennsylvania municipalities' Planning Code Act two forty-seven of nineteen sixty-eight, as amended, requires that every county in the Commonwealth adopt a comprehensive plan, and whereas Act two forty-seven requires counties update their comprehensive plan every ten years, and whereas the Lackawanna County and Luzerne County Planning Commissions have worked jointly in the preparation of a regional comprehensive land use plan for both counties, and whereas the Lackawanna County Regional Planning Commission met on February eleventh, 2021, and voted unanimously to for the draft plan to the Lackawanna Board, Lackawanna County Board of Commissioners to begin their adoption process and open a forty-five day public comment period required by Act two, two forty-seven. And whereas Lackawanna County has fulfilled the public review process as required by Act, Act two forty-seven. Now therefore be it resolved, the Lackawanna County Board of Commissioners do hereby approve the Lackawanna-Luzerne County Comprehensive Plan and Long Range Transportation Plan dated January ninth, 2021. Adopted at a regular meeting, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on June 16, 2021. Once again, here is Director Sacco.
This resolution is approving the adoption of the Lackawanna-Luzerne County Joint Comprehensive Plan. It provides an overall framework for local municipal plans. This plan is required to be updated every ten years, and a public hearing was held on June second to present the plan to the public. Anyone have any questions?
Okay, do I have a motion to approve twenty-one dash zero one six four?
Motion.
Second.
On the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, resolution twenty-one dash zero six five, approving contract extensions for the Workforce Development Board.
Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County, on behalf of and is proved by the Lackawanna County Workforce Developmental Board, does hereby approve extensions through June thirtieth, 2023, of the following previously awarded contracts as attached here to Educational Data Systems Incorporated, Adult and Dislocated Worker W I O A Services, E D S I dash E A R N Services, Arbor Employment and Training E N T L L C, Equus Workforce Solutions Youth Services. Adopted at a regular meeting, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on June 16, 2021. Once again, here is Director Sacco.
This resolution states that the county, on behalf of the Workforce Development Board, is approving contract extensions with E D S I and Equus Workforce Solutions. The original agreements were to expire June of 2022. This extension changes the agreement performance end date to June 2023. The original agreement allows for such amendments, and these amendments were also approved by the Workforce Development Board. You have any questions?
If no one has any questions, do I have a motion to approve twenty-one dash zero one six five?
Motion.
Second.
On the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Resolution twenty-one dash zero one six six, approving and amending the home program grant cooperation agreement.
Whereas Lackawanna County is interested in promoting economic development and revitalization within Lackawanna County, and whereas the home applicant is, is desirous of obtaining funds from D C E D for affordable housing, activities fundable under Title II of the National Affordable Housing Act of nineteen ninety, and the implementing regulations of twenty-four CFR Part ninety-two, and whereas the home program requires that a cooperation agreement be approved by both Lackawanna County and the Scranton Lackawanna Resources Development Corporation to detail the individual responsibilities under this grant program. And whereas the current executed home cooperation agreement requires an amendment further detailing the contract period and additional funding necessary, and whereas Lackawanna County has sponsored a grant application to the Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Development through the Home Grant Program on behalf of the Scranton Lackawanna Resources Development Corporation to assist with the renovation of the Gray Street Apartments, one nineteen and one twenty-one Gray Street, Old Forge, PA, one eight five one eight, in the amount of seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and now therefore be it resolved that a housing need exists that has been identified in the local or state consolidated plan and the proposed housing activity addresses this needs. And be it further resolved, the home applicant has conducted the required citizen participation process, and the home applicant will assure the provision of other necessary funds to make the activity feasible, and the home applicant will reimburse the Commonwealth for any expenditures found by D, D C E D to be ineligible. And be it further resolved, that stated in section seven, general conditions, item G, the county and the recipient may amend this agreement at any time, provided that such amendments may make specific reference to this agreement and are executed in writing and signed by a duly authorized representative of both organizations and approved by the county's governing body. Such amount amendments shall not invalidate this agreement, nor relieve or release the county or the recipient from its obligations under the, this agreement, signed and executed as of April fifteenth, 2020. And be it further resolved, the county may, in its discretion, amend this agreement to conform with federal, state, or local governmental guidelines, policies, and available funding amounts, or for other reasons. If such amendments result in a change in the funding, the scope of services, or the schedule of the activities to be undertaken as part of this agreement, such modifications will be incorporated in only by written amendment signed by the county and the recipient. Be it further resolved, Lackawanna County does hereby authorize the Chair of the Lackawanna County Board of Commissioners to sign all documents and accept any awards related to this home program grant. Adopted at a regular meeting, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on June sixteen, 2021. Once again, Madam Commissioner here is Director Sacco.
This resolution is approving an amendment to the required home program cooperation agreement between Lackawanna County and the Scranton Lackawanna Resource Development Corporation to detail individual responsibilities under the grant program. The amendments to this contract include an extended contract period and update to the performance time schedule due to delays caused by the pandemic, and a revision in construction costs due to increases in materials and supplies. The home application, again, is of a six-unit multifamily apartment complex on Gray Street in Old Forge, in the amount of seven hundred and fifty thousand. The apartment projects will benefit low to moderate income individuals, and the project is expected to be completed in the first quarter of 2022. Anyone have any questions?
Okay, no one has any questions, do I have a motion to approve twenty-one dash zero one six six?
Motion.
Second.
On the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, I believe that's up to you Brenda.
All right, thank you, have a good day.
Resolution twenty-one dash zero one six seven, entering to a M A T P grant agreement, Brian.
Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County does hereby enter into a grant agreement with the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania's Department of Public Welfare for the Medical Assistance Transportation Program. The agreement shall commence on July first, 2021, and terminate on July thirtieth, 2022. Adopted at a regular meeting, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on June 16, 2021. Madam Commissioner here to speak upon that is the Director of the Shared Ride Operations, Mr. Wayne Williams.
Hi Wayne.
Hi, how are you? Good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
This is just the, the annual agreement between DHS and the county to provide, there's certain guidelines that have to be met for us to, to provide transportation, and what this does is it just outlines those guidelines that have to be met for the year. And this is an annual thing that we do.
Does anyone have any questions for Wayne? Right, if not, do I have a motion to approve twenty-one dash zero one six seven?
Motion. Second.
On the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, have a great day.
Thanks, Wayne.
Twenty-one dash zero one six eight, approval of an additional arts and culture grant program, Brian.
Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County does hereby approve the additional funding request for the city of Carbondale for Pioneer Nights, requested for six thousand dollars from the arts and cultural program grants, as they have fully accounted for previous money allocated in 2020, and have been unable to raise the funds for them, for the community event. Adopted at a regular meeting, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on June 16, 2021. Madam Commissioner, here to speak upon that is our Director of Arts and Culture, Ms. Maureen McWigan.
Hi Maureen. Well, yes, the world's a little better, and a lot of places are able to do some fireworks shows now, and as that was just read, you know, COVID kind of was a very touching ball on who could do that, you know, when we were going to do that, so it's nice now Carbondale is going to be able to offer a show as part of Pioneer Nights with we fund yearly up in the northern tier of the county, so we feel it's important to help our communities out during this difficult time who might not have been able to raise funds or for other reasons. So that's why we are funding this project. Oh, is that me? Is there any other questions?
Who is that, no, it's not you.
Okay.
Does anyone have any questions?
No.
Okay, if I don't have any questions, resolution twenty-one zero one six eight, so I have a motion to approve.
Oh, question.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, there you go. On the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, moving on to twenty-one dash zero one six nine, approving a professional services agreement for the prison, Brian.
Wait, wait, there's a, there's, right before that, Madam Commissioner, is Maureen, once again, it's twenty-one dash zero one seven seven.
Okay, Brian put it in the wrong area here, okay.
Sorry about that.
I'm sorry, sorry, Maureen.
No, that's kind of.
Okay, twenty-one dash zero one seven seven, entering into an agreement with Community Development Properties, Brian.
Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County does hereby enter into an agreement with Community Development Properties Scranton to allow international fireworks to use the rooftop of the Electric City Parking Garage located at three hundred Spruce Street on Wednesday, July second, 2021. This agreement is among Community Development Properties Electric City Parking Company LLC, Scranton tomorrow, International Fireworks, the city of Scranton, and Lackawanna County. Adopted at a regular meeting, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on June 16, 2021. Once again, Madam Commissioner here to speak upon that is Director McWigan.
Another firework one, as I said, we're like starting to return to normal. So yeah, this is, we're not doing the big show that we normally do every year, so we'll return next year, but we are going to do this small fireworks show, well, not small, smaller event from the Electric City Parking Garage as part of First Friday and July second. So we're just working out all the contracts and paperwork, make that happen.
Okay, does anybody, I'm sorry, go ahead.
That was just, it was kind of muffled, I don't know if anybody understood what Maureen was saying. Yeah, you sound a little muffled, sorry, Maureen, what she's trying to get across is that.
Microphone's a little far away. No, I just said, we're able to do a smaller version of our Scrantastic this year. We're doing it from the Electric City Garage this time, which is over across from the mall, Teen Town. So we'll be part of First Friday, so we thought this was a fun but safe way to handle the fireworks this year.
Thanks, Maureen.
Thanks, Maureen.
Any questions? Do I have a motion to approve twenty-one dash zero one seven seven?
Motion. Second.
On the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Maureen.
Now we're going back to twenty-one dash zero one six nine, I take it.
Yes, ma'am.
Approving a professional services agreement for the prison, Brian.
Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County does hereby approve the professional services agreement with Jean Marie Pregnon-Molesky, a licensed cosmetologist in good standing with the Commonwealth to provide services at the Lackawanna County Prison, to commence on July first, 2021, and expire December thirty-first, 2023. Adopted at a regular meeting, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on June 16, 2021. Madam Commissioner here to speak upon that is the Warden of the County County Prison, Mr. Tim Betty.
Hey, Tim.
Good morning. I was here seeking approval for a professional services agreement for the prison for, lack of a better term, barbering services. We have an individual, Jean Marie Molesky, and, and a, it's really a two and a half year contract that would take her through the rest of this year at ten dollars a head, and then increase it each year afterwards by a dollar a head.
Does anybody have any questions for Tim? Tracy, is that, is it P R E G M A N?
Yes, Madam Commissioner.
Okay, in the, in the resolution, we have M N N.
Okay.
So that just needs to be changed.
Okay.
Does anybody have any questions for Tim? Do I have a motion to approve twenty-one dash zero one six nine?
Motion.
Second.
On the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Thanks, Tim.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Twenty-one dash zero one seven zero, approving provider and professional services agreement for O Y F S, Brian.
Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County does hereby approve the provider and professional service agreement, agreements for the Office of Youth and Family Services for the fiscal year 2020 and 2021, for the St. Joseph's Center, for twenty-one, twenty-two, Attorney Teresa Malsky-Pizak, Concern Harbor Creek Youth Services, the Impact Project, and the St. Joseph's Center. Adopted at a regular meeting, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on June 16, 2021. Here to speak upon that, Madam Commissioner, is the Administrative Officer of O Y F S, Ms. Kathy Schneider.
Hi Kathy.
Hi, everybody, thank you for having me. I'm here to represent Bill Browning from Office Youth and Family Services. We're looking to initiate a contract with St. Joseph's Center. We had a child placed in foster care at this facility in June, so we need to set up a contract with them for fiscal year 2021 and twenty-one, twenty-two. We did contract with them for nineteen twenty, but we did not renew the contract at the end of that year because we didn't have any children there. Teresa Malsy-Pizak, she represents the parent attorneys, so we're looking to renew that contract as well for fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two. And Concern Harbor Creek and Impact Project are all provider placements that we utilize for children in foster care. These are all annual renewals as well for fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two.
Any questions for Kathy?
No.
Do I have a motion to approve twenty-one dash zero one seventy?
Motion.
Second.
On the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Twenty-one dash zero one seven two, authorizing an exception to the County Ethics Code, Brian.
Whereas Lackawanna County is a third-class county existing pursuant to the law of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, and whereas Lackawanna County has adopted the Code of Ethics on January eighth, two thousand and eight, which prohibits an employee of Lackawanna County from having a financial interest in any firm or organization which does business with the county, and whereas Jesse Van Duzen is a full-time county employee with the Coroner's Office, and whereas the Lackawanna County Office of Youth and Family Services publicly advertised for services for the Stable Instruction and Coordination Program with the county's equines, a program that provides therapy for underprivileged and abused children in Lackawanna County. And whereas the position requires a skilled and experienced individual who is trained to work with horses, and Mr. Van Duzen was the only applicant who applied for said possession, position, and whereas Mr. Van Duzen has the skills and experience to perform and run the stable program instruction and coordination program for Lackawanna County Office of Youth and Family Services. And whereas the Commissioners of Lackawanna County believes it is in the best interest of Lackawanna County to continue this program for underprivileged and abused children by exempting Mr. Van Duzen from the prohibit, prohibition, prohibited set forth in the County Code of Ethics and allowing him to run the stable program for the Office of Youth and Family Services. Now therefore be it, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County does hereby resolve the following one. An exception to the County Code of Ethics is hereby credit created to allow Jesse Van Duzen to work as a full-time county employee and enter into a contract with the county to run the stable and program instruction and coordination program through the Lackawanna County Office of Youth and Family Services. Number two, Mr. Van Duzen's contract shall not interfere with his full-time position with the Lackawanna County Coroner's Office. Number three, said contract shall be for a period of one year, and shall be annually submitted for RFQ or RFP process by the Offices of Youth and Family Services. Adopted at a regular meeting, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on June 16, 2021. Madam Commissioner here to speak upon that, once again, is the Administrative Officer, Ms. Kathy Snyder.
Yeah Kathy, tell us why it's so important that we have this project or this program?
Well, every summer, and actually throughout the year, Lackawanna County Office of Youth and Family Services runs a stable program for at-risk children in the community. We have actually caseworkers stationed up at the Stables Program. High-risk children are referred to, to this program by numerous caseworkers in the agency. It's a twelve-week program in the summer, it's full-time for the kids, they do equine therapy. They learn how to take care of horses. So this contract with Jesse would also, would be through the entire fiscal year though, would be helping maintain the stables with John Davis, our caseworker. He'd be providing the stable program instruction and coordination of the programs, and we were looking to contract with him for fiscal year 2021 and for fiscal year 21, twenty-two.
Does anybody have any questions?
Commissioners, I, I would just add that when this contract came up, the Solicitor's Office was asked to review this because it does present a conflict with our current existing ethics code. However, because of the fact that it's such an important program, and it was publicly advertised for an RFP process, and Mr. Van Duzen was the only applicant who applied to administer this program, and it's an important program with C Y S N for the county, for, for these underprivileged and abused children to participate in, we, the best way to remedy this is for the Commissioners to grant exemption for Mr. Van Duzen to, to do both positions, to work his full-time position with the Coroner's Office and to run this program for the Office of Youth and Family Services.
And he has been taking care of the horses for many years.
That's correct.
Yeah.
And there's a lot that goes into that, right?
Yes.
Yes. Yeah, yeah, there, there's, Commissioners, there's also the, the, what makes it unique for Mr. Van Duzen is what, what Ms. Snyder's already indicated, but also there's the law enforcement component of it for the other use associated with the stables. It's primarily for the at-risk youth, but it also serves that dual role relative to the sheriff's office. So quite simply stated, without making the exception to our policy, the, the program would cease to exist because, as Donnie pointed out, there were no other qualified applicants that applied, and the criteria required to be able to do the work is so specific that Mr. Van Duzen was the only one qualified. So what we've tried to do to maintain the integrity too, within our policy in this, in this, in appointing Mr. Van Duzen, is we've carved out the requirement that each year we'll put it out for RFP or RFQ, just to see if there's anyone else out there interested and qualified, and if that's the case, then we can look at them, particularly if they're outside of the exceptions.
Okay. Anyone have any questions?
No.
Do I have a motion to approve twenty-one dash zero one seven two?
Motion.
Second.
On the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Twenty-one dash zero one, zero one seven one, entering into an agreement of sale, Brian.
Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County does hereby approve the agreement of sale between Lack, between the County of Lackawanna and 2020 Montage Development LLC for parcels of tracts of land and improvements located in the borough designated as Lot One A in the Glen Mara Corporate Center. for the price of $1,250,000. Adopted at a regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on June 16th, 2021. Madam Commissioner here to speak upon that is General Counsel, Mr. Don, Attorney Donald Predrickson.
Thank you. Good morning, Commissioners. This, of course, is the visitor's center down at Montage. The Visitors Bureau had vacated the premises down there a number of years ago and moved up to downtown Grant's Jefferson Building. And we do have a daycare on the second floor we lease it out to. However, the rest of the building is maintained empty and the county really has not been able to find a purpose for it. So we, we're now seeking a purchaser. The unique part of the problem with this property is there's a covenant that states the property can only be used as a visitor's center or county offices, which kind of limits our ability to sell it to, to anyone. So we went back to the covenant holder, Hemingway Development, who owns the mountain up there. And they agreed that they would release the covenant if we found the buyer that was agreeable to, to Hemingway Development. Evidently, they didn't, you know, they wanted to control who's, who's going up there. However, they, they, they came up with a buyer for us, actually. The property was appraised at 1.25 million. The county assessor has signed off on that, which is pursuant to Section 2306 of the County Code. We can sell property as long as we meet those two criteria, which they have been met. And at this time, we're submitting a contract for your consideration to sell the property for 1.25 million.
Does anyone have any questions for Don? Okay, do I have a motion to approve 21-0171?
Motion. Second.
On the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Thanks, Donnie.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Resolution 21-0173, approving an addendum to Resolution 14-0161 for Music, Music Borough, Lerta. Brian.
Thank you, Madam Commissioner. It's gonna be a long one, so hang in there. Whereas the General Assembly of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania passed Act 76 of 1977 and subsequently amended such legislation on July 13th, 1988, known as the Local Economic Revitalization Tax Assistance Act, LERTA, authorizing local taxing authorities to grant a tax exemption for certain improvements constructed on defined deteriorated properties. And whereas pursuant to the LERTA statute, the Borough of Music adopted ordinance number six on August 11th, 1981, and held hearings to define the boundaries of the deteriorated properties within the borough in accordance with the procedure set forth in the LERTA statute. And whereas pursuant to the LERTA statute, the Riverside School District adopted Resolution Number 34 on August 11th, 2014, for certain parcels in Hemingway Development Limited Partnership Glenmore Corporate Center parcels described as Exhibit A are within the boundaries of the deteriorated areas within the borough in accordance with the procedure set forth in the LERTA statute. And the Riverside School District adopted Resolution Addendum Number Two to Resolution Number 34 of August 11th, 2014, on November 9th, 2020. Whereas pursuant to the LERTA statute, the Borough of Music adopted Resolution Number, not numbered, on August 12th, 2014, for certain parcels in Hemingway Development Limited Partnership Glenmore Corporate Center parcels described as Exhibit A are within the boundaries of the deteriorated areas within the borough in accordance with the procedure set forth in the LERTA statute. And the Borough of Music adopted Resolution 132020, Addendum Number One to Resolution of August 12th, 2014, on December 8th, 2020. Whereas pursuant to the LERTA statute, the County of Lackawanna adopted Resolution Number 14-0161 on August 27th, 2014, for the certain parcels in Hemingway Development Limited Partnership Glenmore Corporate Center parcels described as Exhibit A are within the boundaries of the deteriorated areas within the borough in accordance with the procedure set forth in the LERTA statute. And whereas certain parcels of vacant land owned by Hemingway Development Limited Partnership Glenmore Corporation Center Parcels, we have to find an acronym for that, and/or more fully described in Exhibit A attached to this resolution and incorporated by reference specifically, the parcels 1982 and 1984, now as PIN number 18601-010 as dash 01210 are within the area designated by the borough as a deteriorated property as set forth in the resolutions and are therefore entitled to an exemption from municipal real property taxes under the LERTA statute for a period of 10 years. And whereas Hemingway Development Limited Partnership Glenmore Corporate Center Parcels sold a portion of the land being lots 1982 and 1984, now as PIN number 18601-010-01210 to M5 Hotels LLC by deed dated August 22nd, 2018. And whereas M5 Hotels LLC has developed a hotel on the real estate described in the deed dated August 22nd, 2018. And whereas M5 Hotels LLC and its successors and assigned shall comply with the regulation of LERTA exemption as provided by the state and local law and resolutions dated August 11th, 2014 by the Riverside School District and August 12th, 2014 by the Borough of Music and August 27th, 2014 by the County of Lackawanna, except as amended here. And, and whereas in order to receive the benefits of, of LERTA exemption, any owner of real estate benefiting from such exemptions shall complete the application for real estate tax exemption on certain improvements for the Borough of Music and the School District of Riverside and the County of Lackawanna. Whereas M5 Hotels LLC has requested the Riverside School District to extend the provisions of the resolution dated August 11th, 2014 and by a resolution dated November 9th, 2020. And the Borough of Music to extend the provisions of the resolution dated August 12th, 2014 by Resolution 13 dated December 8th, 2020. And the County of Lackawanna to extend the provisions of the resolution dated August 27th, 2014. And by this resolution, in order to exempt M5 Hotels LLC from the payment of the improved portion of the Borough of Music Riverside School District and the County of Lackawanna Real Estate Tax for the year 2021, 2022, and now therefore be it based upon the representations by M5 Hotels LLC, the Borough of Music and the Riverside School District and the County of Lackawanna hereby agrees to the following. Number one, M5 Hotels LLC shall submit the application for real estate tax exemption on certain improvements as authorized by the Borough of Music on or before December 20th, 2020, as, and as authorized by the Riverside School District on or before November 30th, 2020 and by the County of Lackawanna. Upon, number two, upon the submission of the application for real estate tax exemption on certain improvements as authorized by the Riverside School District Resolution dated August 11th, 2020, 2014, excuse me, and November 9th, 2020, by the Riverside Music Borough Resolution dated August 11th, 2014, and December 8th, 2020, and by the County of Lackawanna Resolution August 27th, 2014. M5 Hotels LLC shall be exempt from real estate property taxes otherwise payable to the Borough of Music, the Riverside School District and the County of Lackawanna as a result of an increase of the, in the tax assessment for the Hemingway Development Limited Partnership Glenmore Corporate Center Parcels being 1982 and 1984, now as PIN number 18601-01-010-01210, attributed to the cost of future improvements constructed thereon for a period of 10 years in accordance with those resolutions. Number three, all other terms of, of, dated by August 2014 by the Riverside School District and August 12th, 2014 by the Music Borough and August 27th, 2014 by the County of Lackawanna shall remain in full first force and effect, be it resolved that for a period of 10 years, beginning on January 1st of the year, following the year in which the Borough issues an occupancy permit for the improvements to the Hemingway Development Limited Partnership Glenmore Corporate Center Parcels being lots 1982 and 1984, now as PIN number 18601-01-01210. The same shall be from real property taxes otherwise payable to the county. As a result, increase in the tax assessment for the Glenmore Corporate Center Parcels attributed to the cost of future improvements constructed thereon. Adopted at a regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on June 16th, 2021, Madam Commissioner here to speak upon that briefly will be Attorney, or Mr. Frank Rosario.
Right, I think you cut out a couple times. I think you need to reread it.
Yeah, well.
I think you need a vacation after that.
Yeah.
I have one question before, before Frank talks about it. On, on page, on page two, the second, the third whereas up, it says Tracy, Music Borough by August 12th. But then on page three, under now therefore number two, it has Music Borough August 11th. So just check our dates and make sure our dates are correct.
Okay.
Okay, go ahead, Frank.
Thank you, Madam Commissioner. Good morning again, Commissioners. Just to briefly outline what Brian and Chief Jeffers had indicated. This is the new Marriott Hotel that was constructed up on the mountain, Montage Mountain. And whereas, as everyone understands, our, our local economic tax incentives that we provide to encourage development. Usually when the LERTA application is submitted, it's submitted along with the permits prior to the construction commencing. In this case, that did not occur. The LERTA was not submitted timely at the time the permits were submitted. So the construction commenced, I think, in 2018, and they finally, M5 Hotels received their occupancy permit in January of 2020. Now, the LERTA typically would not begin taking effect until the year subsequent to obtaining the occupancy permit. So in this case, with M5 Hotels receiving the occupancy permit in January of 2020, the first tax year to which they received the LERTA benefit would be this year, 2021. So both the Borough, Music Borough, and the School District, Riverside School District had decided and had authorized the allowance of M5 Hotels to file the LERTA application, even though it was not timely submitted. And both of those applications, I'm sorry, both of those ordinances were passed and those have been submitted for our consideration. In my consideration, I had looked at first to determine that they were not attempting to capture any prior tax years in which they've already paid their taxes. And as I've indicated, that's not the case. It's prospective. So it would capture the tax year 2021 and for the next 10 years thereafter. So based upon that, I have no problem. I've spoken with both Ms. Sacco and Mr. Foley at the Assessor's Office. Mr. Foley did have an initial concern about whether we'd set some precedent relating to this. I'm not concerned about that, again, because it's prospective. We would never allow it or authorize it retrospectively. So in that regard, I would recommend that the Commissioners consider approving the, the LERTA application for M5 Hotels. Is there any, is there any questions?
Okay.
Very good.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve 21-0173?
Motion.
On the question. All in favor? 21-0174, approving the Area Agency Aging Health and Wellness Contracts. Brian.
Be it resolved, Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County does hereby approve the Area Agency on Aging's fiscal year 2020 through 2023 health and wellness contracts for the Greater Carbonil YMCA, the Greater Scranton YMCA, the Greenhouse Project, and Traditional Home Health. Adopted at a regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on June 16th, 2021. Madam Commissioner here to speak upon that is our Director of the Area Agency on Aging, Mr. Jason Kavulich.
Hi, Jason.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
These are evidence-based health and wellness programs. They are flat-funded through the state. They are, basically, it's a pass-through from our agency to these organizations. And these are specific classes that, like I said, they're evidence-based. So the curriculum is very, very rigid and specifically designed to track outcomes. These agencies that do it for us basically do it for, for cost. It makes a great impact. And it helps prove that these, these programs lower the cost of a person's health, health insurance, healthcare as they move forward in life.
Does anybody have any questions for Jason?
No.
Do I have a motion to approve Resolution 21-0174?
Motion.
On the question. All in favor?
Aye.
21-0175, approving an Area Agency on Aging Senior Center Events Agreement. Brian.
Be it resolved, Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County does hereby approve the Area Agency on Aging Health and Wellness Agreement for Senior Center Events with Bonnie Stroll, knitting instructor. Adopted at a regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on June 16th, 2021. Once again, Madam Commissioner, here is Director Kavulich.
This is very self-explanatory. We have a, we have a set rate and schedule, pay schedule for all of our instructors. We're bringing on a knitting instructor as per request of the older adults.
Any questions for Jason? Do I have a motion to approve 21-0174?
Motion.
I'm sorry, 75.
Motion. Second.
On the question. All in favor?
Aye.
21-0176, awarding the COVID-19 vaccinations for homebound and/or disabled individuals. Brian.
Be it resolved, Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County does hereby approve and award the COVID-19 vaccinations for homebound and/or disabled individuals to Delta Medics, DePietre's Pharmacy, and Intron Healthcare for the term of May 1st, 2021 through December 31st, 2021. Adopted at a regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on June 16th, 2021. Once again, Madam Commissioner here is Director Kavulich.
This agreement helps provide supplemental funding to the, the providers of the vaccine that we've been working very closely with. They, they were the providers that did respond and that were local to our community. They've, they've been working with us throughout the entire pandemic. There is no reimbursement on their end to do in-home vaccinations. This gives them some funding to cover their cost of sending someone to someone's home and to make sure that we can do that and offer that safely in our community. It's been, you know, we've had a good response and we've had a, you know, a great success in doing this. It's, it's helping drive our numbers forward and making sure we get as much of the population vaccinated as possible.
Brian, why don't you explain to everyone a little bit about how successful Lackawanna County has been with this, with Jason's help and with everyone's help and with your, your hard work on it?
I, I agree, Commissioner. And usually at the end of the, every Commissioners' meeting, we talk about new clinics coming up and how successful you are. After we, you, you, the Commissioners take their vote on this, I'd like to have Jason stick around because we have one more clinic coming up on Friday and we could talk more about that in our daily numbers. I, I have to say, usually what I give you is what he gives me. So let them, let it come right, right from the horse's mouth, if you don't mind.
Okay, no, that's fine. Okay.
Okay, do I have a motion to approve 21-0176?
Motion.
Second.
On the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So, Jason, I, I think the Commissioners and I, listen, the Commissioners, myself, and everyone that's on here knows already, but it should be known throughout the county that the efforts of, of Mr. Kavulich here are, are probably, in all likelihood, the main reason we are where we are in our statistics for being number two in the state, only behind Montour County, which as, as one of us knows, is a very, very small county as far as our vaccination levels go. Our vaccination levels today, we are at 63% of fully vaccinated from 16 years and above. Our numbers are higher at 65% at 18 years and above. What that is at exactly, our new numbers will come out at 1120, but our numbers today are 108,805 that are fully vaccinated in this county. Mr. Kavulich and all those providers that, that he has partnered with over since, since January, every single one of them should be commended for what they do. And Mr. Kavulich has also partnered with providers for Friday, this Friday, at the Grand Cultural Center, and he's going to tell you exactly what's going to go on there, and the Commissioners will be there to help take care of the, of everything with, with Jason. And please, tell them what's going on on Friday.
So we're really proud of the event that's going to happen on Friday. And Friday's event is a, it's a true partnership with the county and the rest of the community. All, all aspects of, of human services, all partners in human services and, and government came together to form this, this clinic that we're going to do on Friday. The NAACP has sponsored this, this event as well and, and, you know, put their, their seal of approval on what we were trying to accomplish here. We really focused in on equity. We've really focused in on vaccine hesitancy. And we launched a, you know, a campaign through Kick COVID, which is totally community-based grassroots movement that, you know, we were a part of. But, you know, and helped foster and grow. We made this, this about the people that we're serving, and we have reached out to them in their own languages. We have, you know, ads running in Swahili and French and Portuguese and Spanish and English from community leaders and respected members of the, of the religious circles that these individuals really listen to and have a true connection with. We've had grassroots people going out to do door-to-door. We have advertising. We have messages going out through all the school districts, through the homeless shelters, transportation available. And we're also doing a, a fresh food giveaway. doing a fresh food giveaway. And for those who are coming to get their vaccine, they'll have the ability to choose. It's a client select pantry, which is the ultimate in terms of dignity and respect that we can give these individuals. They will be able to choose from fresh produce and meat and dairy items that are available that day. We also have, you know, our partners at the United Way and CEO Weinberg have donated gift cards from Gerty Supermarkets so that if you're there for your shot, we're going to raffle off those gift cards every hour on the hour. So that, you know, we can do that as an incentive to bring people in. The volunteer response has been overwhelming. We have, you know, an incredible amount of volunteers coming in from the community on our website and signing up every day. I think I'm getting about three to four an hour that are signing up. And we're really trying to make this about the people we serve and to know that, you know, this, this government and our partners are there to answer, answer the call when they need us. And I'm very proud of everything that we've done. And we've done it in partnership. And I think that's, that's the great message that we send, that this isn't talking to people, this is talking with people and making sure we work together to accomplish the common good.
And, and the, the clinic is at the Scranton Cultural Center, starting from 9:00 AM to 5:00 PM, correct?
Correct.
Our volunteers will be able to park, Lackawanna College has offered up their parking lots to our volunteers. So we'll be able to have them park there. They've offered up their public safety officers to help us with traffic and all that kind of stuff. This, this truly is what, what Jason is saying. This is a community effort to get us over the final, the final, the hill. And, 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 you know, it's, credit also has to be given to our citizens and residents for wanting to get the vaccination in the first place. You know, we can, we can offer it, but we can't make them take it and receive it. And our residents have received it and have welcomed it. And that's why all of us in this world have started to get back and we're turning, really, truly turning the corner in the vaccines and beating this virus.
And this is a walk-in clinic. So this is different than the other clinics we run. It's a walk-in clinic. There'll be Johnson &amp; Johnson available and there'll be Pfizer available so that we can reach the younger adults that are approved now for the vaccine.
And Brian, before you mention the, the rate of single, the vaccination rate, it's, we're over 73%, aren't we, for single shots?
We, we are at, we are at 74% today with 126,411 people who have received at least one shot. We are, we are looking at, our, our dates for 16 years and older, we're looking at fully vaccinated somewhere around July 14. And at 18 years and older, we are looking at the 4th of July for 70% fully vaccinated. And once we hit those numbers, I think that the county can start opening up, getting, like, really opening up, getting back to normal procedures. That's when we go back to Maureen's earlier thing about the fireworks, we couldn't have the Scranton Tastic because you have to plant it so far out. And when we were looking at planting it back two, three months ago, we couldn't know what these numbers were going to be at that moment in time. But, you know, the events that we're looking to hold and other groups are looking to hold in the fall and going into the winter months next year, this county is head and shoulders above everybody else in the Commonwealth. And they have the Commissioners to thank for it. They have Jason Kavulich to thank for it. And they have the residents to thank for it also, for, and all the partners that did this. All the pharmacies and providers, the healthcare providers that have helped with this since January, need to be commended by the Board of Commissioners at some point.
Yeah, and you too, Brian. You did a great job.
You're in the ship. Everybody makes the ship move. That's all. That's all.
Okay, moving on. Do we have an opportunity for the public to address the board, Trace?
No, we received no emails today.
Okay.
Hi, Jason.
Hi, Jason, sorry. Opportunity, or I'm sorry, Commissioners, other business?
Commissioner, I would like to make a motion to authorize the undertaking of a request for proposal issued by Lackawanna County for a county-wide reassessment. Do I have a second?
I'll second that motion.
One favor?
And the, and the question?
I think it's poor timing. We're still in the middle of a pandemic and now you're going to start that. So I'm a no on that. That's.
All of this is an RFP. We're just asking companies to get back.
It's the beginning.
It's the beginning, yes.
Yeah, I mean, we have to.
It's over 50, it's over 50 years since it's been done. It's time to get at least started to do something about it.
And I believe we're coming out of the, we're coming out of the pandemic. We can't keep putting things off under the guise that we're in a pandemic. I mean, the county, county has to move forward. The RFP process, the first step, so I fully support that. So if there's no other question, all in favor?
Aye.
Oh.
Any other Commissioners' business?
Yes, Commissioner Dominic, if I may, if the Commissioners do not have any other additional business, I would just like to address the Commissioners and the public briefly, if I may, with regards to the ongoing issue concerning the Lackawanna County Tax Claim Bureau and the City of Scranton Intergovernmental Agreement. Would it be appropriate to do that now, Commissioners? Or does anyone have anything else?
Are you, yeah, I don't have a, are you just going to discuss? Go ahead.
Yeah, no, I'm not going to discuss the intricacies relative to fees and percentages. I'm just going to address briefly what I think needs to be addressed publicly so that we can, 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 can direct the narrative in a manner which is factually accurate and consistent with what's actually occurred.
Sure.
Look, as the Commissioners are well aware, this process with regards to the county beginning or commencing the collection of Scranton's delinquencies started even long before this current administration. And that started back in 2016. And, you know, obviously at that point, it didn't go forward. And, and, you know, we probably understand the reasons why at that time. But nonetheless, there was some legislation at that time that was created, and that was the ordinance in 2016, which really outlined the attorney's fees associated with a collection work specifically under the Municipal Tax Claim Lean Act, which is applicable to the City of Scranton. So once our administration then came in last year, and it was probably around July or August, where the city had reached out to us, and those discussions started again in earnest with regards to the county collecting the Scranton property delinquencies. And so from about August of 2020, right up until it was enacted by the county, adopted by us on December 2, 2020, we had engaged in numerous discussions and communications with the City of Scranton, with the mayor's office, with the solicitor's office, with counsel, for city council, with some of the members of city council. And it was really a concerted effort by everyone. And everyone had the ability to have input and to say, obviously, anything that needed to be said relative to the agreements. And then we moved forward. The city adopt, or adopted the intergovernmental agreement, which they prepared. That was adopted and approved by, by city council and the mayor. And then we followed suit, as I said, on December 2, 2020. And then thereafter, the, the agreement was in effect. And then the professional services agreement with regards to Mr. Joyce was executed shortly thereafter. The discussion that has recently occurred with regards to the Tax Claim Bureau, and more so, I think, the accusations that have come to the county or towards the county relative to the city, I just have to say are simply false and disingenuous at best. We have spent countless hours in the last month now defending an agreement which, quite frankly, both parties not only voluntarily and knowingly and intelligently entered into, but the City of Scranton specifically requested and asked for this agreement. The insidiousness of what has been going on here is the fact that this agreement, which, as the paper correctly reported and the city agreed, has created a boon for the City of Scranton. We have delivered in excess of $2.8 million to the City of Scranton. And at its current pace, we are probably expected to deliver or could deliver somewhere around five or six million to them by the end of the year. Those are delinquent property taxes. Those are taxes which the city did not previously collect, but which they had budgeted. And so there's a much larger impact that this has. So while at the same time, the city is saying, we didn't know about the contract despite the fact we signed it and entered into it, that, that we didn't know what the attorney's fees are, at the same time, they're making those disingenuous claims, they're sitting there collecting all of this money from the same system and program and process that we set up in conjunction with them. That's just simply wrong. When you have a contract and parties to a contract, you have to assume that both parties in that contract move forward in good faith. I know we are, and I know we have. We can all have a reasonable discussion and a debate or, or agree to disagree over fees or amount of fees. But what, what we can't disagree on is what's factually accurate and, and, and what common sense just dictates. And for us to not agree or for us to move forward with this contract, I'm saying to the Commissioners that there has to be a change, and that change needs to occur from the city's perspective. Joe, Joe O'Brien, the city solicitor, was quoted in the paper as saying, he doesn't know why the liens are only applied to the City of Scranton. Joe O'Brien was quoted as saying, well, he doesn't know why the professional services agreement was not put out for bid. Joe O'Brien has done more respectfully municipal law than all of us combined. To be as respectful as I can, Joe is, is either disingenuous or he, he just didn't read the documents. Because first of all, the only law that's applicable to the City of Scranton, as Attorney O'Brien and the city knows, is the Municipal Tax Claim Lean Act because they're a class two-way city. We can't apply any different law. If we could, or if we were advised to by the city, we would have. The city could change that, but they'd have to modify it through their Home World Charter. They have chosen not to do that. So we have to apply that specific law. That law requires the application of liens. Attorney O'Brien knows that, and the city knows that, because they've asked us to apply that law, and they've asked us to apply those liens. And as far as the professional services contract, professional services contracts, and Attorney O'Brien knows this, are not subject to competitive bidding requirements, are RFPs. It doesn't mean you cannot do them. But typically, when it comes to a professional services, particularly with regards to solicitors, under the Home World Charter and the Third Class County Code, the Solicitor's Offices appoint those. And I will be very candid, as I have with the Commissioners. The reason that Mr. Joyce's firm was chosen was specifically because of his experience and knowledge of both the Tax Claim Office and the Municipal Tax Claim Lean Act and the Real Estate Assessment Law. Mr. Joyce has been that solicitor down there for 14 years. He was the interim tax director, I think, for three or four. As part of the overall structure or restructure after we assume the delinquencies for Scranton, is we worked through Mr. Joyce's office, and we eliminated the stipend that he would receive, and we eliminated any other billing out of that office. So in addition to that, he does all the work associated with the liens and the collection, which includes the upfront costs of almost $200,000 for the filing of the lien. So all of that was factored into and considered when we reached this decision. And that was known to the City of Scranton. Now, I've always said, and the Commissioners have, because we've had this open discussion, that we don't have a, you know, we don't have a, there's this, we don't have a, we don't have a, a, a crystal glass. We can't see the future. We don't have anything to which we can base this off of because this is new. This has not been done before. So we always said we were going to continue to monitor, both from the perspective of making the process better if we could, although that seems to be working just fine because we're delivering record numbers of delinquent taxes to the city, as well as the fee structure. But without having anything to compare it to, that's an ongoing, an ongoing view and discussion, which we have and we've continued to have and will continue to have. But what we won't do, and what I would not recommend to the Commissioners, is that we continue forward in a contract where one party to that contract, while they benefit from the same system and benefit greatly, they're sitting there beating us over the head on the other side because of whatever reasons, whether it be political or otherwise. But it's not for the reasons that they say. And it's not because they didn't know. And that can't continue. So what I'm going to do, and let me say this, here's the other very important part of this, two important parts. One is, what this does is this brings question, it, it, it questions the credibility of the Tax Claim Bureau to the extent of the process we use. And that's just simply unfair. Remember, we're having this discussion because of the amount of attorney's fees that were generated, only because of the amount of collections that occurred as a result of the good work of Mr. Joyce and the system, the Tax Claim Bureau itself. That's what we're talking about. So in that context, to bring question upon that, or to question the credibility of that office or that process is, is wrong. It's wrong. And that needs to stop. And if it doesn't stop from the city's perspective, I suggest we stop it. But we can stop it through the termination of the contract if we need to. The second thing is, every municipality upon which these taxes come in, remember, they budget, and their primary budget, our primary budget or source of revenue is, is their tax revenues. So when you have these delinquent taxes not coming in, right, each of these municipalities are budgeting as though they are, but they're not coming in. So what happens? So that means that they have to then fill holes because they have a budget shortfall. And then those that are timely paying their taxes at some point face potentially a tax increase. Well, the budgeting side of this and process of this is also the other positive impact that the Bureau is having and what this process is undertaking, which is why I'm assuming that while the city sits there and, and, and wants to, you know, condemn the process or condemn the county in, in setting up the process, they still collect the funds. So at its core, it's wrong. And what I'm going to advise the Commissioners is this, I'm presently at the point where, based on everything as it stands right now, I'd have to reasonably advise and have the Commissioners consider terminating this contract. What I am going to do, however, is reach back out to the city. They've reached out to me this morning, although they've made it incredibly difficult. At the end of the day, the process works. And it's to the benefit of the taxpayers and the residents in the City of Scranton. And none of us, the Commissioners, this administration wants to do anything detrimental to them. The issues with the city and the county relative to whatever the, the, the politics of it are, should not impact the good-paying people of the City of Scranton and those who timely pay their taxes. So I am going to reach back out to the city. I'm going to try to communicate with them. And, and in order for this to work going forward, there has to be an understanding and, and, and a, and a, and a level of good faith from their perspective. And if we get it going forward, then we'll remain. If not, then you can't have one party to a contract continuing to try to follow their rights and duties under the contract while the other side is beating them over the head. So, thank you for the time.
Thank you. It's, it's, it's just, it's just wrong what they've been, they've been saying. It's not true. And, you know, and, you know, disingenuous is certainly an interesting word, Frank.
Yes.
I think there's another word for it, but I won't go there.
Right.
This is, it's, it's absolutely ridiculous. You know, they had the contract, they wrote the contract, they said, signed the contract, they sent it to us. And now they're saying they didn't know. Are you kidding me? This is ridiculous.
One of the first things they teach in law schools, you never sign anything without reading it. So assuming that they signed the agreement, which they did, we would hope that they had read it. And if they read it, then they should have been well aware as to how we're proceeding. And if they didn't read it, add on them.
As Frank said, Joe O'Brien's been doing this law for a very long time. He's been on a public payroll for as long as I can remember. So for him to say that he, you know, was unaware is not true.
Absolutely false.
Okay. Does anyone have anything else?
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you.
Okay, if there's nothing else, I will take a motion for adjournment.
Motion. Motion.
Second.
On the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everybody.